Hello, everybody. I'm Michael Brown from Montgomery College Television. And we are coming to you today from the Godelski Institute for Technical Education. And Dr. Pollard is very excited to be hosting her first Town Hall of 2016. As always, if you're nearby, why don't you come on over and join us? We would love to have you here. We are in the auto lab. That's room 165. Now, we encourage you to ask questions, make comments, introduce new topics of discussion. And if you are watching online, you can email your questions to townhall@montgomerycollege.edu or you can send them in via Twitter using the hashtag #AskDrPollard. And we're going to try to get to as many of your questions as we can during the time that we have today. One final note, whether you're here in the room or you're watching online, please make sure you identify yourself before you ask your question. And now, without further ado, here's Dr. Pollard.
Thank you so much, and welcome to each of you all for being here today. How about the space? Isn't this pretty cool? I want to tell you a little bit about it before I launch into this. And I have some prepared notes here so I can make sure I stay on point. This building that we're meeting in today for the Town Hall meeting was the first one at Montgomery College built with private funds. The Homer Esch Godelski Institute for Technical Education came to life in 1992, designed to provide technical training and to promote the value that technicians bring to our economy and to our society. And as you can see, our automotive technology program is a part of that mission, a very vibrant part of this mission, in fact. But students are also trained in a number of other areas: building and construction technology, wind and solar technology, digital fabrication, building maintenance, machining, computer repair, and welding. This building is symbolic of the astonishing growth in technical education over the last 20 years. Such training now plays a vital role in a modern economy. Hundreds of thousands of middle-skill jobs that go unfilled in this country are trained for in laboratories just like this one that we're in today. Automotive technology is also a very great example of completion right here at Montgomery College. There's currently a shortage of automotive technicians in our area. Each year, though, over 400 students train right here for jobs in repair technicians, vehicle inspector, and service writer. The curriculum is certified by the automotive technology industry to ensure the students are properly prepared to work in this high-demand and high-tech field. The median salary in the metro area for auto technicians is about $50,000 a year, but more experienced techs can earn significantly much, particularly if they keep coming back to Montgomery College and building their certifications. The college's auto technology program also attracts technicians who are already working in the field but want to advance their skills and gain additional industry certifications. The college partners with the Washington Area New Automotive Dealers Association to provide entry-level jobs, training, and a career pathway forward to the next generation of technicians, including hybrid and electric vehicles. There's a hybrid right there. Montgomery College is helping to lead the way in recognizing the vital role of middle-skill jobs in our economy. And we can be proud of the work that continues to be done in several realms of technical education right here in our organization, training future workers for expanding in the high-tech industry and economy. So I don't know about you, but I've got my eye on this red Corvette. And I'm thinking I could help advance the college's marketing plan by just simply having that on the side and driving around Montgomery County, Annapolis. Oh, it needs to be purple, though, right? Yeah, red's my favorite color, though. That's a problem. I don't know how that would... Would it look the same in purple? No. See? The red, it's something about the red, right? So we are delighted to be... Am I not in my mic? I gotta be in the mic, sorry. So it has been... I'm gonna offer a couple introductory comments. We're gonna go right into questions. I think we already have about half a dozen that have come in thus far. And obviously, in the audience, feel free to be generating those yourself. We have had quite a winter. I don't know about you, but I'm a little bit snowed out. And as a result of that, though, I really want to thank everyone who has played an active role in helping us be prepared to be open, even in the midst of some crazy weather times. It took 73 facility staff working for four days with backhoes, front loaders, dump trucks, and snow blowers to clear the campuses, 73 of them. People in communications, facilities, safety and security, emergency planning, student affairs, and academic affairs all worked together to ensure that, one, people were adequately informed about what was happening for us during that time, but also to be responsive to the delayed opening. And to me, it's absolutely amazing what they were able to accomplish in such a short amount of time. As a result of that, our spring semester is underway. I'll tell you, it does feel weird to say "spring," given the fact that we are still experiencing winter, but we are off to a good start with the spring semester. For fiscal year 2016, the college is experiencing higher-than-projected increases in both fall and spring credit hour enrollments. We're about 3% over our projections. So every time we do the budget, those of you who are unfamiliar with this, we project what we think our enrollment is going to be the following semester. We look at a whole series of factors that go into that. Well, we're over what we projected, about 3%, which I think is actually miraculous in these day and ages. Now, we are about 4% less than where we were last spring, but given the fact everything we are right now, I think it's a pretty significant step that we've been able to see these accomplishments. Speaking of budgeting, we're in the process of preparing for the FY '17 operating budget. I have spent quite a bit of time thus far already in the county council and my other favorite place is Annapolis. So we spend quite a bit of time there making the case about the needs of the college. You should have seen a communication that came from me that talks about the priorities that we have this year for the budget. Very simple. We're looking to expand and continue our commitment to our employees and to our students based on our collective bargaining agreements and creating environments where employees have the ability to thrive. We're continuing to build on our infrastructure. And as a result of that, we're asking the county for an additional $10 million of new resources. We've gone through and many of you participated in a very thoughtful process to reduce that ask. We have also done some work looking at how student tuition can fit into this. We've also done quite a bit of work of not spending as much as we thought we can. So as a result of that, we are, though, planning to expand our ACES program. We're going to continue to fund our Achieving the Promise work, and we're looking to put a significant amount of money forward for scholarships to help those students who are unable to pay a tuition to come to the college. We've had lots of folks helping with advocacy, and I really want to thank... Last week, we had a group of students, about 15 of them, go to Annapolis. I think the greatest manifestation of who we are as a college is when our students can go and tell their own stories and say it with confidence and pride. And then, it was fun to watch them. Mark and I were saying, the first time they would sit down with one of the legislators, they'd be kind of nervous and, "Okay, how you doing?" and, you know, waiting for somebody to speak for them. By the third or fourth one, "Let me tell you about Montgomery College and what our needs are." So I really want to thank them. I was so proud of their poise and their confidence. I've been doing some testifying in Annapolis, and we're continuing to make the case for what we do. Just a few last points here. Cybersecurity is a place where Montgomery College continues to bring value. Last week was the dedication of the National Cybersecurity Center of Excellence. We had U.S. Secretary of Commerce Pritzker here, Pritzker, at the event, who called out specifically Montgomery College's work in this space and all the things we're doing with our leadership and our TAC grant in other areas. Senators McCulkey and Cardin, along with our county executive, was there and celebrated the work that's being done in this space. All of this, I think, is helping us to continue our commitment to advancing the promise, this idea that students have the ability to complete and reach outcomes if we're systematically ensuring that our programs are relevant and that we're looking at our practices, our policy, and our culture to create equitable environments for students to be successful. That's the intention behind our Achieving the Dream work, our membership in that organization. I announced that we joined and were accepted into that. I have about 16 members of the college community who'll be going to the Dream Conference next week. I'll be joining them for a portion of that. We have about 2,000 people from across the country who are looking at issues of technology and data, strategic planning and leadership, and classroom techniques and strategies to help advance student success. So I'm quite excited about where we are with that. When we return, we'll be setting up our core team and a data team, and we'll also have people in here from ATD who help us do what they call an institutional capacity study to make sure and help us assess where we need to focus our attention. And they also assigned us a leadership and a data coach from outside the college who helps us be very thoughtful about the work we're doing. So I'm very excited about that. Let me end on a note by talking about our men's basketball team. I don't know about y'all. This is... I think it's pretty exciting that our men's basketball team won the Maryland Junior College Athletic Conference. We had a lot of our folks here supporting them. They won the conference. We also had Coach of the Year. We also had Player of the Year. It was unbelievable. It's exciting. They're going this weekend to play in the...
Region 20.
Region 20. And if they win that, they can go to the Nationals. So I'm all excited. I'm trying to figure out who I can challenge and how the mayors do that when you play each other. So I'm wait... I think I got crab cakes as my challenge. I'm waiting to see who I can challenge from some... I'm hoping it... Well, I better not say where I hope it's not from. So anyway, we'll see how that plays it out. So those are my introductory comments. If I did that well, perfectly, about 10 minutes, I'll turn it over to Michael to get the question started.
All right. We're going to start with an online question. This is from a student, Alicia Charlerie.
Okay.
And she says, "My reason for writing today is to discuss my concerns about the closing of Montgomery College Early Learning Centers in Tacoma Park and Rockville. MCELC has not only provided me with quality classes but also access to a wonderful accredited and affordable childcare faculty for my daughters, which allowed me the opportunity to return to school. What is Montgomery College's plan to help the affected parents and children secure quality childcare before the proposed closing? Have you looked into the model of other colleges and their method of securing funding for childcare facilities? If so, how can you implement their model into MC? Will you, Dr. Pollard, please take the time to meet with us, the parents, and if so, when?"
So, thank you, Alicia, correct?
Alicia.
For that question she had. Alicia? Alicia, thank you very much for the question. There's lots of thoughts and responses I have to... Let me start off by making this fairly clear. And I've been thinking a lot about this this morning as I was having a conversation with someone else about another issue. There have been multiple points in my life where situations have changed and that make me very concerned and very thoughtful about what has happened. And as a parent, I share deeply your commitment and wanting to make sure your children have the best childcare facility they can and the parenting, the compliments you're parenting in your family. This, quite simply, and I've been thinking, we have folks who are putting together message points and thoughtful ways of responding. In the short of the matter, we don't have the money to continue doing it, plain and simple. The revenues that come in from the childcare program are far under the expenses of the program. So much so that the college over the last five years has lost about $1.5 million in childcare services. One of the problems with this is that we've had multiple opportunities to have our bookstores in particular and other auxiliary services subsidize childcare. So we're able and willing to run a loss for a while because we had resources there to help subsidize that. We don't have those resources there anymore to subsidize that. In addition, it was probably even more problematic. We had a large grant that helped us support the childcare centers. Neither of those two things are existing right now. So at this particular point, we have about Montgomery College students, is it 17 Montgomery College students total in the program? We have community members who are in the program. We have employees who have students there. But in terms of Montgomery College students, of the 60,000 that we have, credit and non-credit, 35,000 who go here credit, we only have 17 students who enrolled in the program. We have done a lot of work over the last several years to look at this. We had a task force that dated back about three years ago. There was a compilation of college employees, a parent, two parents, one who was a college employee and another parent who was a part of a task force, looking at this issue for some time. And they're recommend... And they were asked to look at the model and how do you create a sustainable model? Their conclusion was very similar to the ones we had. We would have to significantly increase tuition and fees for that program. It would not be sustainable for the parents. It wouldn't be competitive. And ultimately, at the end of the day, we'd have a very hard time justifying why we kept the program alive. In addition to that, we have a number of facilities issues with this program. Neither one of the campus childcare centers are ADA compliant. If we were to do that right now, we would have to put about $300,000 at Rockville, about $400,000 into Tacoma Park. That's excluding a number of other infrastructure issues that we would need to do. And while we have a good, robust number of students who are in those programs, is in terms of the total community members and employees, children, and students who are there, in order for us to be able to increase, we would have to increase the number of students so much to ensure that we could keep a competitive weekly fee for students to be able to attend that, there is not a sustainable way to be able to do that because we can't revitalize, redesign, re-modernize, whatever the word would be, those facilities in a way they could do that. Added interest is that our Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus, that particular facility is a historical, is a part of historical village. So in order for us to go in and do additional work there, we're talking probably even more money than the $400,000 that I cited, just to make it ADA compliant and to respond to some of the other issues in there. It is never an easy decision to make. I wish that we didn't have to do it. I wish that there were alternatives to that. There are none at this particular point. As an institution, unfortunately, my job to recommend to the board, based on the work of my senior leadership team, is to try to create sustainable ways for the organization to exist. At this particular point, we don't. We are, though, committed to trying to help those families in the coming weeks. So we've scheduled a series of forums with the parents. I think the first one, well, actually, we had one, it was supposed to be Monday night, but the snow prevented that, or ice, whatever it is. Tuesday, we had one at Rockville. We have more coming up, the next two or three days, am I correct? Two more coming up, where that will give an opportunity for members of the college community who are parents in these programs to talk with the administrative leadership, to talk about what options are there. We have been working with the county to provide additional options regarding childcare and to make that information available. The college is also looking at ways in which we might be able to assist those families next fall as they're transitioning into private daycare. I understand that it is an uncomfortable and a disappointing decision. Unfortunately, it's a decision that we have to make because it is not a sustainable model for us. I'm hopeful that the concern and care that we're trying to provide for those students and their families in the fall semesters, we're going through this process, would be one that you will feel at least valued in this process, if not completely understood. And I appreciate your courage in asking the question, your continued conversations about it. But for me, it is not a financially sustainable model for us. And as an institution, we have to make some decisions that are very difficult, and this is one of them. So thank you for that. Yes, sir.
Okay. We're going to have to go back to another question from online. This one is related, not exactly the same. "I would like to bring up several concerns I have about the MC Department of Education. I would like to know about the numbers of students enrolled in the ECE, Early Childhood Education Courses, for all campuses. Are there plans to build up the education and ECE program and add more full-time staff? Part-time teachers are no substitute for full-time professors with office hours for evening and weekend students. It is my hope that MC can provide, in their budget, education, ECE lab space for the practice of hands-on work that we will use in our professional work. Thank you for your time. I wish you continued success as president of Montgomery College." This is from Janice Hockman, and she's a student.
Thank you, Janice. And Janice sent the question ahead of time, so we actually were able to get some folks to give me some responses to that. We have now more than 650 students majoring in various early childhood education programs at Montgomery College. Staffing decisions, though, are generally based on enrollments at each campus and our attempts to grow and support each program sustainably. There is a, how do I say this, a very thoughtful process that the deans work with the senior vice presidents and the provost to develop a recommendation regarding new faculty positions. It is a highly competitive process based on need, based on enrollment, based on any number of different issues that go into that. So that is one rationale there. A full-time ECE faculty member is now at the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus because job projections were healthy and we wanted to grow that program there so things would be more equitable. One of the things we spend a lot of time thinking about, particularly in our one-college model, is how do we ensure equitable outcomes and resources at every campus? At this time, ECE enrollments are the lowest at our Tacoma Park Silver Spring Campus, so it is not likely at this point that we will be having additional full-time faculty there. There's a certain threshold we want to get to so that that faculty member has a sustainable load and that at the same time, we're able to provide the services that we need and that we have rooms in order to be able to deliver that. The Rockville campus has only two full-time ECE faculty members, and Germantown has a regular part-time faculty member. So there are a number of different things that are in place there, but that is a program that is indeed important and recognized, and we're very excited about that. And thank you, Ms. Janice, for the question.
All right. We have a question right here.
Thank you. So I didn't realize I can ask something afterwards. My comment is, so I know that they're keeping Germantown open and the expectation is the parents from Tacoma Park and Rockville go to Germantown, but I know Germantown is at half-capacity. So why not just take the funds that was put into Germantown and put it back into Rockville and Tacoma Park?
Sure.
And a second question is, has MC not looked into the models of other colleges for keeping the childcare centers open?
Sure. So I'll start the last question first. The college has looked at multiple models. In fact, we've sent folks to some national conferences, did best practices research to do that. And interestingly enough, Montgomery College is one of the last community colleges in the state to still have childcare services because it has been seen as an unsustainable model fiscally. When community colleges started, one of the things in order to promote access, we went through a process of having a number of services provided on our campuses to help students be able to attend the institution. Unfortunately, as others become competitive with us in terms of the economics and as we started to look at the rising cost, one of the things that our program has exceptional people in this, who, as you mentioned in your message, exceptional teachers, staff, they do great work. We also have to pay them a wage that's consistent with what we pay, what industry would pay, and in some cases, competitive with what's happening within the college community. Fiscally, it was not a sustainable model for us. And more importantly, we are very similar to most community colleges in Maryland and Maryland, and certainly several within the region. The first part of your question, I'm sorry, what was it?
...
Germantown. Oh, Germantown campus is a brand-new facility. So about two years ago, as a part of the master plan, this particular facility was built. It's a brand-new building, ADA compliant, has two classrooms in it. And as a result of that, as we're transitioning this into an instructional laboratory for our education program, it was much more realistic to have that at that particular location. Brand-new facility, it was there to do that. The other campus, Rockville and Tacoma Park, have extremely dated facilities that are probably in the order of magnitude of $8,000 to $900,000 to bring them ADA compliant, to have any level of expansion, and that would require an approval process that is unlikely, given the politics, particularly of our Tacoma Park area. So that's why we did not do that. In addition to that, and probably more importantly, we also had the ability to identify this as an instructional space. While we will have childcare that will be there, it is supplementing an instructional program, much like our instructional programs in nursing and allied health have specialized spaces, cybersecurity has specialized spaces. That's the intentionality of it. Yes, sir.
Okay. We're going to switch topics a little bit. This is from Pam Taylor, Facilities Administrator Supervisor, Facilities Administration Supervisor, Office of Facilities, Rockville. "Will it be possible for the MC Shuttle van pickup..." I think a word's missing here. "...to pick up employees and students from the Rockville Metro and/or Mark Train Station in the AM up to 8:30 a.m. and drop off in the evenings around 5:00 p.m.? Can you have someone investigate this to see if it can be a possibility? I believe this opinion will encourage some of us to get off the roadways and commute." Thank you.
I will certainly ask Dr. Waramack and our transportation team to look into that. We have done a lot with the shuttle service to expand its services. Those of you who use this, you would know that we had very limited service. And then, first, we started off between Rockville and Tacoma Park, then we expanded it to Germantown the following semester. And then after that, we had, actually, the student council brought forth the need for more programming related to that. So we did expand it this year. Budget potential there hopefully will be that, and we'll sit down and have that conversation. Never, I haven't heard that yet. So thank you... Who was that? Thank you for the question.
That was Pam Taylor.
Pam Taylor. Thank you, Pam Taylor. We can look into that.
Okay. All right. We have another question. This one comes from Susan Booker, Project Coordinator and Architectural Designer, Central Facilities. "I would like to suggest looking into the subject of relocating student services at Rockville from, to the Maniki Building." I'm not quite sure what that means. I guess she means relocating it to Maniki. "The college's presence on Rockville Pike would be highly visible and greatly accessible, the first stop for everyone coming to MC, similar to the flagship property anchor of the Nunley Building on Tacoma Park. Maniki is already configured, furnished, and wired for office spaces and suites."
Very thoughtful question. I wish there was something we could do. I do believe that there will be a number of student services functions that will be in the Maniki Building for exactly the reasons that Susan indicated, where it is in terms of being on the frontage, some of the resources that are there. There's an initial conversation that's been had about what should still be in that building. Obviously, we have the need to create more space on the Rockville campus, or the things that can move from Rockville into Maniki to create more spaces and have direct services to students. But I'm assuming she's meaning portions, Sharon is meaning portions, of our student services because we are building a new building on the student services, for student services on the Rockville campus. It is not a facility that we can move. The state would not allow us to do that, and it wouldn't be, and Maniki wouldn't be large enough to actually do that. I do think that there will be a handful of services because of exactly what she said, the frontage, the way in which it's located, that actually might stay in Maniki, and there's a group of folks looking at that. But I have not received recommendations on that yet, Sharon, so as soon as I know something, I would be happy to let you know.
Okay. All right. Susan Booker has question number two.
Go, Susan.
If you, she would like to ask, "If you could comment on the proposal to purchase a new building and move multiple units into said building, will college design staff have input into the office layouts? There is a wealth of knowledge and experience with developing floor plans that our own people have and would like to share." Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon, for that question. So let's step back. The college is actually not going to be purchasing the building. The Montgomery College Foundation will be purchasing the building. And their arrangement, the college will then lease back that building. And that's a key point that I need to make in this, that the community college, our foundation, has the benefit of being able to have a level of engagement in this process that is probably atypical of our programming processes that we've used prior to the time at the institution. So one of the things, going back to Sharon's earlier question, as we talk about fiscal stewardship and sustainability, the college has got to figure out how to spend less money. And right now, we're in the process of spending over $2 million a year in leases, about $2.5 million a year in leases, what we lease in terms of our 40 West Guti and where OITB is, where IT is. If there's an opportunity for our foundation to purchase this building, purchase a building for us, allow us to lease it back, get out of those leases and to consolidate into a way where we are saving money and in 20 years or so have a facility that we own, it makes great sense for us as an institution. So that's what we're doing right now. And also to consolidate central services into one place to build efficiencies. And I would tell you, one of the charges that I've made to the group that's looking at this issue, our foundation has acquired a space planning team that's working with our facilities team to help design this space. One of our natural proclivities, and I just, and those of you who work in Mani, everybody's got to have their own printer. Everybody's got to have their own door. Everybody's got to have, we have about five or six kitchens in Maniki, right? I don't even want to know how many OIT, because I happen to be walking through and I saw a room full of paper. And I'm trying to figure out how much paper does one area need. There's a whole room of paper, I think, by IR. So here's a whole conversation that we got to be thoughtful about as an institution. There are different workspace configurations that are far more modern than what we have become accustomed to as an institution of higher education. And this is an opportunity for us to examine that. So we're going to have consolidation. Ooh, right? We're going to have open spaces. We're going to have open spaces, we're going to have communities in this space, but we are going to function differently. And my intentionality is to remove silo thinking. So if I can remove silo thinking by first removing silo spaces, we might be on to something. So I, Sharon, your question is very important. We already have some facilities, planning staff that are associated and assigned to this project. I think one has been completely assigned to the project. There is a small work group that, of folks who are going to be invested in this process, who are leading and guiding, they're working with the external planner who's working with us that the foundation has hired. Because again, the foundation wants to make sure they're getting the maximum resources they have out of this. Got to fit everybody into the building and design in a way that's going to be sustainable for us. So I'm excited about it. Hopefully, if the building is acquired, we'll have a better space that's more effectively designed to create the community that we need and respond to that, break down silos and have us be more efficient, and, I should have started off first, save us money as an institution.
All right. This question comes from the Staff Council.
Okay.
They are currently meeting at Tacoma Park Silver Spring and cannot be with us today, but they are watching remotely
Hi.
from their meeting room. And they have several constituent concerns regarding EAP funding. They would like to know, what are your thoughts on non-bargaining staff exhausting EAP funding at a much quicker rate than faculty and bargaining staff? And are there plans to increase EAP funding for non-bargaining staff for FY17?
So you all must have sent this question early. Somebody gave me some notes on it, Megan did, and I apologize, I should be more effective in responding to this. So to your question, what are your thoughts? I had no thoughts until the question was posed. Was unaware of this dichotomy as it relates to bargaining and non-bargaining staff because I don't tend to look at our employees as bargaining and non-bargaining. I see them as employees of the institution. I want to make sure that we provide a common employee experience for all employees regardless if you're bargaining and non-bargaining, which has been, I think, the philosophy of the institution for some time. So according to what I have here in my notes, and I'm going to read them because literally I just looked at them as I walked in, a non-bargaining staff EAP for FY16 is funded at $453,798, so almost $453,000. The maximum EAP benefit for FY16 for non-bargaining, full-time staff is $2320 unless the above figure has already been exhausted, that $452,000. If you're moving beyond an associate's degree, this amount is different based on in-state tuition at UMCP rates. The FY17 budget includes an increase in EAP for non-bargaining staff just under about $108,000. So an increase of, up to, of, what would that math be? I did that myself. The greatest portion of growth in EAP is taking credit and non-credit classes. So we know that a number of people are doing that. For faculty, EAP totals, one factor that keeps them from running out of EAP is that they're required to have advanced degrees for employment. So they have already secured probably most of their EAP dollars access to that prior to becoming enrolled. They don't have the need that many of our employees who are working on their educational attainment may not. So going to the questions, there are plans to increase it. It has been budgeted in FY17. I don't have thoughts on it for non-bargaining. I will spend some time thinking about that, but you heard my initial reaction, and as y'all know, I typically don't filter myself. So that's really what it is. I'll give more thought to that. I probably also want to understand the phenomenon of why bargaining staff are not accessing it as quickly. I'd have to, so I need to do more to understand the issue that's been presented. But in short response, more money is scheduled, are budgeted for next year, and also I will give thought to the question.
Yes. I have another question about the childcare. So back when the college ended the gateway to, I have my notes here, sorry, the gateway to college program, there was a two-year transition so that the students were minimally impacted. So I know that the parents have sent emails about if there was an opportunity or an option to keep the centers open for two years, to allow the parents to be a part of the communication and the decision-making to figure out how we can, how grant funding or whatever can happen to keep the centers open. So I wanted to know if that was an option as well.
So that was discussed, it's not an option. In order for, the cost of keeping the childcare program, so this past year, the childcare program lost $500,000. So I don't have the ability to find resources and auxiliary services to supplement that. So even if we kept it open for another two years, I'm at that point going to be down another one-point-something million dollars. So it would not be a sustainable model for me to say, let's keep this open. When the gateway to college program was closed, it was phased out. There were a number of things that happened in that. We did not admit new people into the program. We helped people move out. We had folks who were employed in that particular program transition out. And then when the program was closed, it was closed. So a little bit, there's a different context for that. There are other services that can be rendered in the community allowing us to be good citizens of the community as well in terms of economic development. Yeah.
So I know June 30th is the proposed closing date, which is on a Thursday. So I was just wondering, is that a final date that they have to close the college? Because it's on a, you know, it's not, I don't think that's actually considering the parents as well to close it on a weekday? So is that the final date or has there been?
So are you saying would July 1st be better? Is that what you're saying because it's a Friday?
Well, July, well, yeah, I would think that more towards the end of the summer, honestly, because now it's like right in the middle of the summertime.
So June 30th is there because that is the college's end of our fiscal year. So the college's budget is designed based on a fiscal year that starts July 1, June 30th. Most thing, actually, I can't think of anything in the college that doesn't operate around that fiscal year because we have reporting differences based on the fiscal years for resources. So that's why June 30th. If there's, if, by being a Thursday, I thought, so you think in Friday, July 1st, I could try and have a conversation about that, but it won't go beyond that.
Okay. And then what will happen with the faculty and staff? Because we have wonderful faculty, the teachers are wonderful.
So our intent with the faculty and staff, there's several things that are happening. One is that we are a number, hopefully, we have put in our budget request to county this year to secure additional resources from the county. Probably one of the things I did, and I don't know if a lot of the folks who understand this, the college has multiple budgets. One budget is auxiliary. Auxiliary functions are budgets that are supposed to be self-sustaining. The college in theory is not supposed to contribute any resources to that. They should be providing revenue from themselves based on the services and products they sell in order to self-sustain them. Childcare was in that model, our bookstore is in that model, have a couple other things. We have our operating budget. This is the money that we pay for our academic services, our programs and delivery of instruction. And then we have several other budgets, facilities, capital budget. Our bookstore and our childcare center are on auxiliary services budget right now. So the idea is that we're trying to get money from the county to move a number of those employees into our auxiliary, from auxiliary into operating so that we'll have the opportunity to help them go into the childcare laboratory at the Germantown campus. That's our hope. We'll be advocating desperately for that, and that's what I've been, actually, was just at one of our council members' offices doing that. Others who will not be transitioning will be offering voluntary separation agreements, some who are eligible for early retirement incentives, we'll provide that to them. Our HR STEM staff is working with that team of folks to explore all the options that are available to them, including our own WDC area delivering some career coaching, I believe WDC is doing it, career coaching, resume development, helping them figure out what are the best options for them. So that's the intentionality of this particular point.
Okay. And I have a last question.
Sure.
Has any thought been put into, because I know there are assistant students there, I believe they're college students.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if they're volunteer or if they're paid, but has it, any thought been put into maybe getting volunteer students who have, who are maybe in the field of education so that they can get, they can get credit instead of having to pay them? So that may help with the budget as well?
So am I hearing you say, get volunteers to help provide childcare services instead of paying them?
The students, sorry.
Yeah. So I think there was a series of liability issues that I would have with that, that I'd have to explore. Volunteer has a different relationship with a college than an employee does, and there's certain insurance issues that go with that. I'll have the team who's working on that explore it, but there's a different reality there.
Okay.
Accreditation, the accreditation guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a follow-up question on that? Well, I'm still struggling to understand how it's going to be financially sustainable to have a half-capacity facility in Germantown be financially sustainable when you have a full-capacity facility in Tacoma Park Silver Spring and in Rockville. And so I guess I'm just struggling with that, first of all. And then, again, I'm going to harp on the date as well because it is, you keep referring to the fall semester and transitioning everyone in the fall, but no, this is not a fall semester issue. This is a May-June semester timeframe, or timeframe in months. And most of the childcare facilities in the area have six-to-nine-month waiting lists. I can't get my kids in anywhere until September when kindergarten starts. So we're having kinder, outgoing or upcoming kindergarteners having horrible transitions, having to, you know, find camps, and there aren't many camps available for, you know, four- and five-year-olds. They're much more expensive than the early learning center, and they're going to have to go through these transitions right before another major transition in their life. So, and I'm on multiple waiting lists right now, and it costs, it costs $50 to $150 to get on every waiting list in the area. So, you know, this is not a very sustainable financially for any of, anyone involved. A little bit more communication, we've been asking to have some sort of a recourse, a discourse with you guys since December, and we're, you know, just finally getting an information session, not a communication. We would really, really appreciate a bit of back and forth, a little bit, since we weren't even considered or consulted in the process. We would really like to be able to have some conversation on trying to find a few solutions to make a bit of this transition a bit more, you know, easy for everyone involved, the children and the parents.
So there's going to never be a perfect time for this to happen. The scenario that you're describing for your children would be the same scenario someone would describe to me next fall. They will say, well, my child is four, they're going to be preparing a transition into kindergarten, can you wait another year for this to happen? The following year, I'll have someone else say, my child is four, we're transitioning to kindergarten, can you wait another year for this to happen? And I certainly appreciate, and I, and I, I speak as a mother. I understand the fact of trying to find childcare that makes you comfortable with what's happening in your child's life, providing the educational services, and I get that. And I, and I'm sorry that you all are in a position where you feel that you have not been responded to appropriately. November was the decision that was made, if I'm correct, right after that decision was made, a letter was sent home to parents, and it was sent home to help them understand that. The time between November and now, could there have been some in-face meetings? Well, as a student, you understand, the college is closed, almost most students are gone during the holiday break. We came back, we started setting up these meetings, and as a result of that, as a matter of fact, the meeting that we scheduled the other night at Rockville had little to no participation in it. So I understand the fact that there is a need and you are trying to figure out how this is going to work in your life. There is not going to be any perfect timing for this to occur. If you go to the session that's going to happen for Tacoma Park, our team is going to be there, will be able to explain the concept of why the business model works differently for a facility right now at the Germantown campus versus the facility at Tacoma Park and Rockville. I know it's not what you want to hear. I cannot extend this beyond July 1st. So the college is working to figure out how we can help you find resources in the community, and we're also helping to subsidize that in the fall semester. We're going to provide a stipend to help you make that transition. If you're a parent who has a child in a childcare facility at Tacoma Park and Rockville this spring and you're enrolled to be a student in the college in the fall, we're going to help you find, because you want to know something? That's cheaper for me to be able to help you do that right now than for me to keep a childcare center, two of them, open that are not raising enough money to stay open. I know this is a hard thing to hear. My job is to make the hard decisions from time to time, but my job is also to be able to be realistic about the future of the college. And right now, it is not a sustainable business practice. I'm sorry that it puts you in a position that you're in right now. Yes.
Okay. We're going to switch tracks a little bit, talk about email.
Oh, boy.
The email system is not, oh, this is from Marty Nebb, a lifelong learning student. "The email system is not working for me, and I understand it is not working for a lot of students, both traditional students who need and rely on email communication and lifelong learners like me who like getting the news and occasionally need to use it for intra-college communication. On the first day of classes, one of my professors said that she uses email exclusively to communicate with her students. What are you going to do to investigate and fix the problems with Office 365? What is the timeline for either fixing the problems or deciding to go back to the old functioning system?"
Well, I might offer that the old system wasn't as functional as one would think. And the reason we moved to the Office 365 was for some very specific reasons, to give students greater access to the suite of services that comes with Microsoft. You are able now as a part of Office 365 to access, was it Word, Excel, PowerPoint, the whole package as long as while you're enrolled at the college. And to, actually, it's not even while you're enrolled at college, it's period, right? Was it while you're enrolled at the college? While you're enrolled at the college. I'm going to, Mike, can I, can we steal your mic and have Carl talk a little bit about this? Because I get way out of my knowledge base, because you can see I was going to give the whole suite away. And let Carl explain what has happened. And I really want to thank Carl also for the communication that he's been trying to do about this. It sucks. I should come up with a more eloquent way of saying it, but it does. But there are a series of reasons, and I guarantee you it's going to get better. But there is a process that we have to go through. So I'll let you talk about that.
So let me first take the opportunity to apologize to the folks who've been affected by this. It's definitely something we fully understand the impact of, and we appreciate that it's a necessary tool for students to communicate with their faculty. The details of what we're doing, I think we're really on top of it at this point. I'm going to let my friend Fang here, who you also know, to walk us through a little bit of that. Fang?
Sure. Yeah, I know it sucks. And I apologize for the suck. But the reality of, what's different between Office 365 email and what we had before with the student email system is that, in the student email system, we have all these expensive servers sitting in an expensive data center somewhere hosting your email, right? So we can give you an unlimited amount of emails as much as hard drives of servers that we can pay for. So when we trying to enable a better student experience in terms of how to use a more modern web browser to access email or Word, PowerPoint, and all those things on your local computer, we have to go out to the cloud where Microsoft provides a much better experience, a much better service than we can. So in doing so, we have, like, we're in this midway moving from here to the cloud, right? So we have our student information system sitting here in the college, and then we have a cloud service out there. So we have to, working with Microsoft, we have to manage how the student receives what they call licenses, your ability to use the services, right? So, and we didn't do a very great job in doing that, in managing that, how the student get onboarded and how the student lifecycle in terms of registration and not register, and how do they exit the system. So we have a failure in logic in how we determine that, and we are, we have a whole team of people dedicated and working on this, right? So we have a short-term solution, and we're not talking about months, we're talking about weeks, we try to find, get a stable solution so that everybody can just do their schoolwork, right? Not worry about email, right? So, and so, and then we also have a longer-term solution where we can really not apply bandage anymore so that we can really use the solution and excel at it and kind of enable faculty and staff to use the technology for what they do and forget about the technology.
So thank you, Fang. So if those of you, I'll translate this in my non-technical jargon, which you did a great job of, is that we have a situation where our, Microsoft, in terms of how the product is designed, is delivered through the cloud, it is available to our students, the suite of materials that they, tools that they can access. If you're not a student, Microsoft doesn't want you to still have it, right? So we have to figure out, I always call these little robots, that the semester you're in, the semester you're out, get you back in, get you back out. Our mechanism of making those two systems talk together has not been perfected. And it is in the, so right now, we have a Band-Aid to put on it, and now from this point forward, we are going to figure out how to make it work so that we're getting the most out of it. And I love, I think one of the messages I saw the first you started off with, I'm sorry. Every time you go into something this big, while it has ultimate benefits for the institution, it creates problems. And we hope that our folks can be patient as we get it figured out.
Before I ask the next question, I need to ask you a personal question. Are you warm? Would you like us to crack the door in back?
Thank you, Dewey. I am warm, but I really, it could be my own personal summer. And I, I'm also layered with multiple things from in and out because I hate wearing a coat. So I'm going to get over it. I I fan, and then I step off. Thank you, though.
All right. A student emailed in wanting you to clarify something back to the early learning centers, which is if you could clarify what you mean by vouchers to student parents?
Yeah, actually, I don't know if I said the word vouchers, but what I will say, the college is trying to provide stipends to a student. If you are a student who is enrolled in the Montgomery College this spring, and you enroll in Montgomery College this fall, and you have children in our childcare facilities, we're trying to find a strategy to assist you with resources the following spring. So right now, did I say that correctly, Ms. Donna?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, for the fall, for the fall semester, for the fall semester.
It will be through July 1 through...
The end of the calendar year.
So from July 1 to December 31st, that is when we will provide, what's the word you're using?
Financial assistance.
Financial assistance. Yeah, voucher has a different legal terminology that I didn't, we found out. Thank you, student.
Okay, we have another student question. This is from Drew in Germantown.
Hi, Drew.
He wants to know, why do we have some professors who have low ratings on ratemyprofessor.com?
Drew. So ratemyprofessor.com is an online tool that allows students who have hopefully taken the class, not always, to provide feedback about an instructor. My personal favorite was the one semester I got a chili pepper, I just want to say. There is a, an opportunity, yeah, hot chili, hot, you get chili pepper, yeah, spicy. So you have the opportunity to contribute to that. In any social media environment, there are going to be folks who are going to rate very, very high, and there are some folks who are going to rate middle, and there's going to be folks who rate low. A lot of that is subjective. A lot of folks may say, oh, I don't want to, I don't do all professors who lecture a lot. Certain disciplines are given to lecture. I don't like classes where you have to have a lot of group discussion. Guess what? Some classes, you have group discussion. But what I also think, I think you're probably getting at, are issues of accountability regarding performance. So we do have a review process that occurs within the institution for faculty, both full and part-time. Our intentionality is always to provide the best instruction. We, I think we have some of the best and most talented faculty in the country working at Montgomery College. But I think it's also appropriate to say, just as we have in any, some of the best students in the country, we also have some students who may not be at their best in any given semester. We may have some faculty in the given semester who may not be at their best. So the reality about that is a constant struggle and a balance for us to make sure that students have information, which we do, and we have no control over ratemyprofessor.com or the other ones that are out there, but at the same time, we'll be very thoughtful about the fact that there is a certain subjectivity to these that one, I can't respond to at any given point. But Drew, you know that's how it is. It's like some restaurants have really, really good reviews, and you walk in there and it was awful. Could have been the service that day, could have been what you had, could have been the fact that your palate is a little bit different than somebody else's. Those types of systems are highly, highly subjective.
Our next question actually came from last night's evening news. They were talking about free community college again, I believe it was on Channel 7. And so a question came in, what are your thoughts on the increasing number of free community college proposals and ideas that are being floated around out there?
Yeah, I love it. I think the reality about it is that community colleges are the gateway for so many people to reach their part of the American dream through education and support services. We know the number-one barrier to college completion is poverty. We know that to be true. So we know for a fact, and many people say, oh, community college education is far less expensive than other options. It may be, but we also know we have a fair amount of our students who live in poverty. In fact, if they receive a Pell Grant, a Pell Grant still will not cover the complete cost of education for a semester, a year at Montgomery College. So it's important for us to be very thoughtful and cognizant of that. These opportunities for free community college programs recognize that what we did, our country did 50, 60 years ago, made compulsory K-12 education a prerequisite. This is extending and recognizing that the knowledge economy that we have right now really dictates that we have educational systems that go to the 14th or the associate's degree. So I'm very much supportive of that. We certainly wonder about the capacity issues if we watch what happened in Tennessee, the state of Tennessee when they did it. They had a very robust program. They've seen exponential growth in their community college system. So we're still spending time. I'm very supportive. I haven't seen the legislation in Maryland, don't know how it's going to play out, but we're looking at different models, and I serve as a huge champion of it. I know for a fact what community colleges do.
All right, we have a question here in the audience. If you could stand up, please.
Sure, thank you. Dr. Pollard, following up on Drew's comment about ratemyprofessor.com, you've often talked about an interest that the college has in having its faculty be more intentional and more intrusive in the lives of the students. Could you expand on that for the professors, both the full-time and the part-time, as to what, what that means in the classroom and out of the classroom? And in a perfect world, what would each of your instructors on all three campuses be doing to really pull the students into the subjects and help them across the line?
Thank you, Nancy, for that question. I would be, and have an expectation of relevancy, that we're having material that's being taught in the classroom that is current and relevant to the times that we're in, to the discipline that's being taught. I would like the faculty members to have a passion for what they do and to understand and position their discipline in their course within the broader context. That's why I'm so excited about the general education redesign, this idea of being very thoughtful about what we want to say the cumulative experience of general education should be at Montgomery College. I would want faculty members to be in the faces and lives of their students. Sometimes that's easy to say, what does that look like? Everybody's different, and you're not going to walk around hugging every student. We have other kinds of issues that that happen. But I do think this idea of, if I noticed you're not there that day, to let you know that I noticed that you're not there that day, right? And I want to know what's happening. When I see that you are not living up to your potential, let's talk about what's happening in that environment. And then how did that faculty member, are they connected to the resources of the institution in such a way that they able to put those resources in front of the students? But most of all, and probably the thing that I would ask for, is to have a passion for what we do. I love, I've had many opportunities to think about working in other sectors. I choose to work at a community college because I know what we're about. Even when I have to make hard decisions to tick people off, even when I know that I'm worried about how the college is going to do X, Y, or Z in the following year, I believe so deeply in this mission, our mission of access and completion, that I'm willing to stay engaged in this work over. And that's what I would hope that I would see from faculty and staff and administrators. Thank you.
All right, we have time for one last quick one. And this is from Seth Carmen, MC Transfer Staff. He wants to know, he has heard rumors of a new logo. Is that true, and when will it be released?
Seth, what about rumors? So the college is in the process of doing a redesign of our website. The college is also in the process of looking at our logo and redesigning that to make it contemporary and consistent with a brand that's also being redefined for the institution. I think the last time the college's logo was redone was 30 years ago, if not, if that that long. Very few companies keep one logo for 30 years. You have to have something that reflects the issues and times that you're in and reflects a momentum for the organization. So we are in the process, Seth, of redesigning the website. That should be done by July 4th. We'll introduce it some, have a preview at the closing meeting. We will also, are in the process of probably holding some type of forums, four forums on the proposed new logos, get people's feedback on that, and look at how that's going to work out. And the same thing with a branding statement. That's already been worked on, so have that introduced to the college community. So Seth, thank you very much for the question. Put that rumor out.
Thank you, Dr. Pollard, and I want to thank everyone for participating in today's town hall. We want to encourage you to keep an eye out on Inside MC Online and also the President's Corner Monday message. And if you want to stay on top of everything that's happening at Montgomery College, we'd really like you to follow Montgomery College and Montgomery College Television on social media.